Go to our work session on recovery and watershed implementation update. Who do we have taking presenting here today?
Thank you Chair O'Brien, council members. My name is Steve Manlow for the record. I'm the director of the Lower Columbia Fish Recovery Board and I'll be presenting today. Very much appreciate the opportunity to speak with you all. It's been quite some time since we've been before the council and we do like to provide periodic updates on how we're doing in our local recovery plan and watershed plan implementation. So that's what we'll be focusing on today. Next slide please. I wanted to start off with a little history on who we are. I know some of you are quite familiar with who we are and what we do. I know Counselor Medvigi, he sits on our board and Chair O'Brien was a former member of our board, but I just kind of want to get everybody up to speed on a little bit of history on, you know, who we are and what we do. We are one of the seven recovery organizations in the state. You can see how those organizations are broken out on that map in the upper left-hand corner here. We were created by state legislation back in the late 90s when a lot of our salmon and steelhead stocks were initially listed by the federal government under the Endangered Species Act. We were the first regional organization created in the state and one of the key drivers for that was actually Clark County, working with our local legislators back in 1998, 1999, who helped craft the legislation that established the board. And one of the reasons for that, it's local control of salmon recovery direction rather than have kind of a federally driven process. The feeling in southwest Washington was the need for a locally established board that can move recovery forward. And that basically was the model. It was created down here, but that really carried over into the creation of other regional organizations in the state as well. So that's kind of an important background piece. Next slide please. Just a little snapshot on the area that we cover as the board. It's the five southwest Washington counties, Waukeah, Calhoun, Lewis, Clark, and Skamania. But we do also work with our adjacent counties and help facilitate restoration work in those areas as well. So we have an agreement with Clickatack County to provide funding out there as well as Pacific County to help identify project opportunities down in the lower part of the estuary. Next slide please. In terms of what the board actually is, it is prescribed in our enabling legislation and we really consist of elected officials from each of our five southwest Washington counties. As I mentioned, Counselor Medvigi represents you all on our board and we have other county counselors and commissioners from the other counties as well. They appoint citizens reps and then we have representation from a wide variety of other groups, federally recognized tribes, hydro power utilities, environmental representatives. We have a standing seat for a state legislator as well as a representative of the southwest Washington cities. And all together, it's a 15-member board. And in addition to me, I'm staff. I work directly for the board and we have four additional staff members and together that's really what constitutes the Lower Columbia Fish Recovery Board. Next slide please. So what we do, our work really falls into several broad categories and this is kind of a course breakdown. There's a lot of nuance in each one of these, but number one, as I mentioned, we are one of the seven salmon recovery regions and in that role, as I noted, we facilitated development of the federal recovery plan for salmon and steelhead. We also facilitate a lot of habitat restoration work. I think a lot of you might see us in that role because we do help bring dollars down to the region to help fund watershed restoration. And there are 25 bodies in the state that do that work. We're one of those 25 bodies. And then lastly, we are also a legislatively established lead agency. So kind of going back to the late 90s, the Watershed Management Act was adopted and that called for preparation of these locally based watershed plans that help frame up water supply management, protection of in-stream flows, things like that. And we help facilitate those plans together. All of these plans have been integrated. So we have a fairly seamless program when it comes to salmon recovery, watershed plans and the habitat restoration work we do down here. Next slide please. So I'll start talking a little bit about the recovery functions as a recovery organization. And we have four species down in the Lower Columbia that were listed as threatened back in 1998, 1999. And they are chum, Coho, Chinook salmon, and steelhead. These are all the species that occupy the Lower Columbia or unfortunately listed under the Endangered Species Act. And within these species, we have 74 distinct populations that are listed, which, you know, it's kind of the dubious honor of the highest number in the state. So it really makes recovery challenging when you look at the number of listed populations we have to deal with down here. Next slide please. So as I mentioned, we facilitated development of the regional recovery plan and that was adopted by NOAA Fisheries at the federal level. That work started in 1998 and carried through to 2010. So it was not an easy process. It involved a lot of collaboration across about 82 different partner organizations. And that plan, one thing that kind of distinguishes it from the other recovery plans in the state, it is truly an all-H plan. And when we say all-H is it does not just address habitat, but it addresses hatchery and harvest reform. It addresses hydro impacts, predation. That's been an important one for our board in the last few months with all the sea lion issues on the Columbia River. And it also addresses the estuary. So it's really kind of a full lifecycle approach for recovering salmon and steelhead. It's not all about habitat, but deals with all of those different sectors or threats to salmon and steelhead. And I also wanted to note that the plan is built on the concept of sharing recovery burden. So, you know, you hear a lot out there about, well, if we just did X or we just did Y, you know, we would recover our fish. And when you really look at the life cycle of the fish and what the drivers are for how they're doing, you really have to do work in each one of these sectors if you want to recover these fish back to healthy and harvestable level. And the plan was built on that concept. It's everybody kind of stepping in together and sharing that recovery burden. And a lot of the actions identified in the plan are built on that concept as well. Next slide please. So the goal of the plan, it's not just to get out from under the constraints of ESA. You know, I know as a county government, many of your programs have to deal with ESA, whether you're building roads or other infrastructure. That is a real constraint economically and just logistically. The goal of the plans are really to get beyond just delisting and getting out from under ESA, but to, you know, getting these populations back to healthy and harvestable levels so we can sustain tribal, recreational, commercial fisheries that are really kind of vital historically to the Lower Columbia River. So it's shooting above just delisting and trying to restore healthy populations that can sustain harvest and that requires healthy watershed processes to get there. Next slide please. So in the Lower Columbia as a whole, we have 17 major sub-basins that support these listed salmon and steelhead populations. Down here in Clark County, which is where our office is located now, the primary watersheds are the North and East Fork Lewis, Salmon Creek, the Washougal River, several smaller tributaries, and then down in the gorge, we have some populations as well. So in terms of how they're doing right now, let's go to the next slide please. This comes out of the statewide State of the Salmon Report. So if you go to the Recreation and Conservation Office, the State Agency, their website, every couple of years they publish a State of the Salmon Report and it'll just give you a good snapshot and how we're doing on recovery progress. And this is not great progress frankly, you know, for our chum populations at the top. And I won't test you on which species are what here in the pictures. So chum populations at the top, not doing so well. We have two really robust populations, but not much in between in the Lower Columbia. Our Coho populations are not keeping pace and neither are our Chinook populations down here, but we are making some pretty, pretty good progress when it comes to our steelhead populations of all the species. They've really responded to the best, to all the recovery actions that have taken place. Next slide please. But there is a lot of nuance. You know, that figure was really kind of looking across the region at a statewide scale. This is more of a snapshot of what we see down in Clark County. A lot of information here to look at, but to interpret this map, blue is good. You know, if you're in that green to blue range, that means you're somewhere between 75 and 100% of achieving our delisting abundance targets. So there are some populations that are doing pretty darn good down here. Others not so bad, kind of the orange and the red are populations that we have a long ways to go to get to our recovery targets. The one blue bar there, you see the entirely blue bar, that's our Lake Falls Chinook that occur in the North Fork Lewis River. They're actually meeting recovery targets. They're healthy and they're harvestable right now. So that's one of the success stories down in the Lower Columbia. It's a pretty robust population. The flip side is that first pinkish or red bar there, our spring Chinook, we have a long ways to go and we're really working with the hydro companies because recovering spring Chinook means getting those fish back up above our reservoir system on the Lewis River down here. So we're making some progress there, but quite a ways to go. So that's just kind of a snapshot of how we're doing down here. Again, there's a lot of nuance in these numbers. Next slide please. So I wanted to talk about each of the H's a little bit, just to give you a sense for the types of activities that have been taken place since the plan was adopted. We'll start with hatchery and harvest reform. Hatchery production has always been a major influence of our stocks in the Lower Columbia. And on one hand, they can provide fish for harvest. On the other hand, when you're trying to recover wild fish, it could be difficult to balance those two different things. So we've really been at hatchery and harvest reform, a pretty concerted effort, starting right with the listings. And most of the actions identified in the recovery plan to deal with hatchery and harvest have been implemented already, but it's an ongoing process and something to remember when you're talking about fish management. I know we're all kind of, you know, impatient as humans. Well, when you're trying to recover fish, you measure things in life cycles of a fish, right? So if you take an action today, that might affect juveniles in the stream. It's going to be five years before those fish go out to the ocean, do their thing and come back. So the situation we're in today, we've, you know, but been putting pressure on our stocks for 100 years. We've only been at salmon recovery for a few life cycles and I know there's a lot of pressure out there that, you know, we want to see more immediate results. It takes time, you know, 100 miles into the woods, 100 miles out. And that's kind of how you have to look at salmon recovery and in particular hatchery and harvest reform. It's going to take some time and concerted effort there. Next slide please. Been quite a bit of progress made on predation in the last few years. I think many of you might be familiar with the updates to the Marine Mammal Protection Act that took place. Congresswoman Jamie Herrera Butler has been a strong advocate for this and a leader in getting those changes to the regulations. And that has allowed for more control on predation by both stellar sea lions and California sea lions, which have been an increasing problem in the Lower Columbia in the last 10 years or so. I think 2021 was the first year where there was a full-blown effort under the new updates to the Marine Mammal Protection Act. I think at one of our last board meetings, WWF informed us that there have been 29 California sea lions, 40 stellar sea lions removed under the new authorization at Bonneville Dam and additional work that's taken place on the Willamette Falls over on the Oregon side. So we are seeing a reduction in the number of the problem animals, so to speak, when it comes to predation on a lot of the stocks. I think the total estimate was 55,000 or so pounds of biomass removed. So we are seeing some progress in terms of dealing with predation on that front. Next slide please. Bird predation, avian predation is also a challenge in the Lower Columbia. This graph kind of represents the number of breeding pairs of Caspian terns. They're one of the birds that eat a lot of juveniles down in the estuary around Astoria and that part of the river. And the general trend has been kind of a downward trajectory in terms of the number of breeding pairs. And there's a lot of active management that's taken place on the nesting grounds and that sort of thing. So we're seeing a pretty substantive reduction in predation from Caspian terns. Next slide please. But that is counterbalanced with some of the numbers of double-crested cormorants. And what we're seeing now in terms of active nests in the Lower Columbia is an increase. So it's kind of like a balloon. You squeeze one part and it's going to squeeze out somewhere else. So, but these are active programs adaptively being managed and there is progress being made in terms of trying to reduce the predation of all these stocks. All the Columbia Basin stocks go through your area twice. The adults coming back into the basin and the juveniles going out. So predation is an important consideration and a lot of progress has been made in terms of dealing with it. Next slide please. Hydro power management. Down here in the county, we have the Lewis River hydroelectric system. And then up in Lewis County, we have the Calhoun River hydroelectric system. And those are both important watersheds for recovering salmon and steelheads. So the focus in those areas, it's trying to reestablish runs from the lower watershed, transport them up to the upper watershed, collect the juveniles, get them back out. And we're part of that process. We have a hydro rep on our board. We sit on various hydro committees and there's a lot of work right now on those trap and haul programs, trying to make them successful. And we're making some pretty good progress there. The other element of that is with those hydro licenses comes some funding for habitat work to improve the habitat in those basins. And we've just started a partnership with Tacoma Power to manage their habitat program on their behalf and couple that with some of our grant work we do already. And we also work in the Lewis River Basin with Pacific Core and Calhoun PUD on habitat work in that basin as well. So quite a bit of engagement on the hydro front in the last 10 years or so. Next slide please. And then habitat, active habitat, when you look at that H, there's two halves of it. That's how I like to look at it. One is it's restoring the habitat that we've lost over time. And there's been quite a bit of progress made. This is just a snapshot from some of the work that's been done down here in Clark County from 1999 to 2020. We've helped put 63 different projects on the ground. Most of these are funded through the Salmon Recovery Funding Board. $16 million invested down here in Clark County and what we found is for every dollar invested, you get about another dollar in terms of economic gain. So it's been pretty beneficial in terms of, you know, generating some, some local work on salmon restoration. Yes, one of the challenges here is, if we can go to the next slide please. Yes, and I wanted to touch on the DNR RMAP program. Some of the more substantive gains in the state of Washington when it comes to recovery have been how we manage our forests and with new rules that were put into place regarding fish passage. When you look at the region as a whole, there have been over 450 barriers on state and industrial forest land that have been corrected. And that's had a pretty major impact on getting fish back up into some of these historically blocked areas. We estimate about 350 river miles that have been reconnected through DNR's work out there. So a lot of progress on the, what's happening in our industrial forest lands. Next slide please. The other half of habitat relates to protecting the habitat baseline. So we're out there trying to actively restore habitat that may have been degraded by other factors over time. But while you're doing that, one of the critical things is making sure that we're holding on to the habitat baseline that we have and not go backwards. Otherwise, we're just not going to make progress and our investments, you know, may not be realized, our restoration investments. We did a pilot program in the East Fork Lewis River and tried to get a grip on local, state and federal programs and the degree to which we are holding on to the habitat baseline. And the results were a little bit sombering in that we really were not able, the data's just not there to show that we are holding on to what we have, you know, when it comes to riparian habitat, flood plains, those sorts of things. So that is going to be a focal area for the board going forward. And I'll talk a little bit about that in our concluding slide as well as maybe some collaboration with Clark County going forward. Next slide please. And this is just a snapshot of that analysis we did in the East Fork Lewis River and all those little purple dots, what those really represent are areas where building footprints intersect with critical areas. And what we found is really fairly similar to, I think, what came out of the 2021 Buildable Land Survey that the county did. We're probably protecting about 35% of the mapped critical areas when it comes to ongoing development. The rest of those areas are being developed and in some cases you have mitigation, some cases not. But overall, to be able to look and determine whether we're holding on to that habitat baseline, we're still maintaining watershed functions is a huge gap and the data suggests that there's some work for us to do when it comes to better integrating recovery priorities into how we look at growth, where we grow, how we grow, individual development decisions, those sorts of things. So that's one of the challenges that we as a board need to focus on in terms of working with the counties and the cities in southwest Washington. Next slide please. So I wanted to transition just a bit into some of the watershed programs. So this relates to those RIA plans that kind of frame up how water is managed in southwest Washington. We, as I mentioned, facilitated development of those plans. They were adopted by each of the southwest Washington Commissions, Board of County Commissioners back in 2006. And then implementation plans were adopted by the commissioners in 2008. We no longer have the funding to actively engage in those programs, but we do our best. And did want to highlight some of the successes that we've seen down here in Clark County when it comes to those watershed programs. Next slide please. So these are the plans that really identify long-term water supplies to meet growth needs in southwest Washington communities. They deal with surface and groundwater quality protection habitat. And that's been integrated with our recovery plan and then providing in-stream flows. And this is especially important when it comes to things like climate change. It's making sure that we're providing enough flows that while we're, you know, meeting the needs of growing communities, we're also meeting the needs of fish out there. And these plans are really structured to try to address those dual goals. Next slide please. And these are just a couple of action examples out of those watershed plans. And when you look at for Clark County in particular, some of the higher priority plans, plan actions relate to where do you get your water to meet your long-term growth needs as communities? And there's been quite a bit of progress on shifting water supplies to meet community needs while also protecting in-stream flows. And I'll highlight a couple of those. Next slide please. These plans also include some different strategies that are reflected here. Areas in pink are really areas that are kind of closed to future water appropriation. Those in yellow are closed as well, but they have reservations that are established in state statute as well. So one of the standards basically you'll see in these plans is they set aside blocks of water that have been defined to meet community growth needs. So if you go to these plans and look at, for example, the East Fork Lewis River, you'll see amounts of water that have been allocated and they are there to really meet the projected growth needs, but also try to maintain in-stream flows. It's striking that balance between water for fish and water for people. This just kind of represents some of those broader strategies. Next slide please. And I wanted to hit on just a couple of what I consider very good success stories that have happened down here in Clark County. And that involves changing water supplies to improve stream flows and still meet the community needs. And there are four of them that I think are very, very important. I'll just highlight a couple of those. Next slide please. The first one is what we call the Jones Boulder source substitution. This was some work called for in the plan down in the city of Camas where historically a lot of their water supply came out of tributaries to the Little Washougal River up in Jones Creek and Boulder Creek. They had water rights from Department of Ecology. The water was withdrawn, was withdrawn there and then literally piped down to the city of Camas for their water supply system. That had a pretty major impact on in-stream flows and the ability of those tributaries to support fish. So the plan basically called for developing water supplies down low in the basin to meet the community growth needs and then to relinquish use of those upstream tributary water sources during the low flow period when fish need that water the most. So ecology issued water right permits for this transfer of water source. And to date, it's been very successful at improving habitat conditions in the upper part of the basin and still meeting the growth needs for the city. And there was a lot of public funding that went into those programs because of the benefits to the local community and the watershed as well. So this, we view as a very important success story down here in the Lower Columbia. Next slide please. This is another one. This is the Paradise Point Water Supply System. You see in that red dot, that's up at the confluence of the North Fork and East Fork Lewis Rivers on the break between Calhoun and Clark County. And this was an action called for directly in the watershed plan. And basically it's to shift water supply sources from wells that are in continuity with the East Fork Lewis River to those that are connected to the Columbia River where we don't have a concern about fish spawning and rearing and that sort of thing. CPU has been very proactive in seeking funds for this program. My understanding is it's still under construction, but the concept is to Um, my understanding is it's still under construction, but the concept is to. Uh, put in the new wells down at the confluence of the river, pump that water up the hill to the Ridgefield area. And then feed into some of the systems that go out to Battleground and Clark County with inner ties and that sort of thing. Um, next slide, please. And why is that important? That graph on the left is basically kind of a flow graph showing conditions in the East Fork Lewis River. And in the summer months, flows get really, really low and that is truly. A bottleneck for the salmon and steelhead that occupied the East Fork Lewis River. The existing well systems have a direct connection with river flows, it's it's delayed, but there's a direct connection. With this new water supply at Paradise Point. We're expecting about a a three to four cubic feet per second increase in flows in the summertime by shifting water supply. And that's critical, that really addresses a lifecycle bottleneck for fish, at the same time. There's a far more stable water supply to meet the needs of Battleground and Ridgefield and North Clark County, you know, via the CPU system, so. An another, in in our minds, success story that we just wanted to highlight, highlight for you all today. Next slide, and I just have a couple more here. Um, yes, so some of you might be familiar, but the Lower Columbia Fish Recovery Board. Uh, helped manage a grant source that came out of a Clean Water Act challenge involving Clark County. Um, and we helped with um, putting those. Um, basically, funding habitat restoration and projects that benefit water quality and quantity. As part of the settlement for that Clean Water Act situation, so through that program that we just, this was our last grant year. Uh, we funded twenty five projects down here in the lower Columbia and we did that through an open competitive grant related process. Um, four point four million has been invested to date in those projects. Planted over eighty thousand trees and there's been a lot of student um, outreach and education. That that program helped fund, so basically getting school kids and volunteers. Out on the ground to do active restoration and actually. Help teach them about the importance of water quality and quantity, so we see this program as as very successful. Um, and really appreciate the opportunity that was provided to us by Clark County and the plaintiffs to help manage those funds. And get them on the ground in a meaningful way, um, so that's another. Item that we think has been hi- highly successful in in the watershed plan program down here. Uh, then I think many of you know, uh, next slide, please, um, ecology just adopted a TMDL. Uh, for the East Fork Lewis River. Um, and that is to address some of the uh, water quality and temperature issues, uh, next slide, please. And it really sets a strategy for dealing with some of the um, septic system issues out there. Uh, working with some of the small ag operations, working on riparian restoration and stormwater management. And those are all things that fit squarely within the adopted RIA plans, we're really really excited to see. Adoption of that TMDL and kind of look forward to working with the county and other partners on helping with implementation of of actions. To kind of move that forward. Next slide. And this is my last slide here, um, just areas where. We would like to perhaps collaborate with the county, um. One, we mentioned the importance of land use programs in terms of protecting the habitat baseline. Uh, we see a great opportunity to work with community development to talk about the recovery plan, what are the priority species, what are the priority habitats? And how do we better consider those when it comes to comprehensive plan updates or shoreline master program updates, those sorts of things? That's an area we would like to us explore with with your staff. Um, monitoring is important as well, uh, some of the challenges we have is. We you know, we we really don't know how we're doing on some of these fronts, so how do we leverage resources to better understand? What's happening in our watersheds, how are uh, water quality conditions changing or habitat conditions changing over time? We see an opportunity there as well. And then lastly, some of these plans are getting kind of old, so uh, we're now looking forward to. Uh, perhaps updating these plans to better reflect where we are today and we see the counties as very. Key partners in helping out with those watershed and recovery plan updates. Uh, the next couple of years, we'll be trying to pull some funding together to help facilitate that, so we'll be back in touch on that front, definitely. And next slide. So that's kind of all I had, I know I've thrown a lot at you there, there's a lot going on, uh, happy to answer any questions you 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 might have on anything I I presented on here.
Are there questions of the council?
I went, if I could, just. I know that we've spent a lot of time, uh, and Steve, thanks for coming and uh, giving uh, a very comprehensive overview, I. You know, when I first um, met with you a couple of months ago. Or a few months ago to um, talk about our aquifer specifically and how it relates. Uh, to the watershed, you've touched on it here, um, and of course, it seems. Really ridiculous to talk about it after two months of rain. Uh, almost every single day and flooding, especially in the Puget Sound area. But you know, it came at a time when we had a week of a hundred sixteen degree temperature, uh, the governor declared. Uh, a drought and statewide and uh. Water was a real concern, uh, so my takeaways from our meeting and and. Kind of the ask for where the county can play a role is really future planning, you know, those public wells that you talked about that. Benefit uh, the watershed down along the lower Colombian where the aquifer is very healthy. You know, that's a strategic view that we should be taking and. You know, Washougal is really getting taken to the cleaners with their water rates because of the well they're having to pay for right now and. With this infrastructure package, I was looking at opportunities. You know, we have wells drying up, especially in the very porous and higher elevation uh, terrain in Clark County. When the aquifer drops in the summer months, as you pointed out, you know, water temperatures rise. Fish have a real hard time uh, surviving and moving upstream, the water flows drop. Together, there's a relationship with the aquifer. Uh, and I can't seem to get either from ecology, from our own staff, you know, what is the health? Of our aquifer throughout the county and should we really be paying attention to that, not only for fish recovery, but for the. Very survival of our population with potable water. Uh, so do you have any comments on that? Because that those are, that was the main thrust of our conversation. At a time when we are right in the midst of the throes of the summer.
Yeah, those are excellent um, questions, Councilman Medvee, um. Yeah, and and you're hitting on kind of a key challenge for us as well, that, you know, our our RIA plans were actually constructed at a time when we had a pretty rudimentary. Understanding of climate change, right? Uh, we did not predict we would be in the situation we're in today. Um, and a lot of the watershed monitoring that's been put in place over the years has number one declined. And number two has not been upgraded to really be able to inform. How are we doing on in-stream flows, you know, how are we doing on on our water supply systems and that sort of thing? So from our standpoint, I think the timing is right to go back and revisit those plans, revisit those strategies. And figure out how we need to update them to kind of reflect, you know, where things are going with with climate change. Um, because as they're structured now, there there are some pretty big, big gaps out there to answer the sorts of questions you're you're asking about. We need more stream flow gauges, we need to understand what, how how the different tributaries are responding, we need to understand what that means for. For wells, um, good example is ecology is tracking exempt well use in the Lewis River Basin. And one of the the problems we're seeing is those blocks of water that have been set up to meet community needs in in those adopted plans. Are already being exceeded up there when you look at the growth levels, so. So we have a lot of work to do, I think, in terms of freshening those plans up and. De- developing the right monitoring to know how we're doing and rethink our strategies, because we're we're. You're hitting on a lot of the gaps that we know we need to to start dealing with as as a community down here.
Thank you, Steve.
Other question, comments?
Yes, I've got a question. Hi, uh, thanks, Steve, this has been a great presentation and I appreciate uh, the information. With regard to uh, collaborating with the county, um. Are you already in process on that, is there anything you need from the council to support moving in that direction, just how can we help with that?
Yeah, excellent question, um, our engagement to date has been, you know, so somewhat haphazard, you know, I would say we we. When we see, for example, a county updating a master program, we try to get on the various committees that kind of help in that process. Um, I I think support in terms of. Uh, you know, facilitating that engagement, you know, if if we have that opportunity to kind of look forward, better understand. What plan updates are coming down the road for the county in the next five years. Um, and and you know, basically. Start having some more focused discussions on, you know, how are we doing on recovery and how how do we think about that in in developing these plans? Today, that's really kind of catches as catch can, right, but it would be nice to, I guess, institutionalize some coordination as those plan. Updates are being brought to the table.
Thank you, um, so my, I guess then my question for county manager would be, uh, knowing we have a little bit of a skeleton crew right now in planning. Uh, at least this month, um, if we could um, hopefully get, you know, share the information and make sure that uh. Planning is is reaching out and coordinating as we move forward, that'd be fantastic.
Yes, absolutely, and I believe we have Jackie Kemp who's on for a future topic, so she has just um, heard this herself as well, so thank you.
Thanks.
Other comments or questions? Okay, thank you, Steve.
Great, thank you.
This information and.
Appreciate the opportunity.
Hey. Okay, um. I think that concludes our work session.